I think what we had to do is get a little video of that. You hit the wrong button, you get a video of the screen going up and down.
Dave, hi, who are you?
Oh, it's the St. Patrick's Day tie.
Line time, no C. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, July 13th, 2021 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which the meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Levering and Alderman-at-Large Ben Clemens will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one nation God, indivisible, indivinity, and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present in the chamber.
Alderman Cleve.
I am here and in the chamber.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I am here on Zoom, and I am alone in this room, but my coworkers are around, and I am unable to attend in person because I am on a work trip.
Alderman Dowd.
I am present, I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Karen.
I am here and I am in the chamber.
Alderman Clemens.
I am present at home, participating via Zoom, because I have been ill for the last three days. Luckily, it is not COVID-19, but still, I am sick, and I didn't want to pass it on to my colleagues. No one is in the room with me, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderwoman Lou.
Present.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Present in the chamber.
Alderman Lars.
President, I'm on Zoom, and I'm alone and minimizing my contact with Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present via Zoom because of mobility issues. I can hear everyone, and my daughter is in the same room.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present in the chamber.
Alderman Mulcher.
I'm here.
You have 11 physically in attendance, and you have four participating via Zoom.
Thank you.
Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. Well, I first, I just have a couple of items to discuss, but first, I wanted to discuss the line item veto that I exercised regarding the bottom line of the Fire and Police Departments. As we've gone into this year, and we've discussed this numerous times in the past, but this was, of course, an unusually difficult budget year, because we started with a $12 million hole created by the state of New Hampshire. In other words, a big property tax increase imposed from Concord. And that consisted of a four and a half, $4.4 million increase in pensions, costs unrelated to wages, unrelated to current employees, as well as a $7.5 million reduction in school aid. So my objective in approaching the budget this year was to try to balance, and I know you all have the same difficult job, the need for quality services for our citizens with the need to keep our tax rate down as low as possible under these difficult circumstances for our hard-working Nashua taxpayers. So going into the budget, I asked that the departments seek to achieve a 0% increase, which I thought could achieve a very minimal tax increase, or the lowest we could get it. Now with City Hall, I want to thank everybody that worked hard on the City Hall, the Fire, the Library, and the Public Works budgets. City Hall is down, was down 2.9% from this year to, to this, this year to, from last. Library is down 2%, or 1.9, and Public Works a little over 1. So we got significant sacrifices and contributions. Those weren't easy decisions. We had to set priorities. We had to make difficult decisions, but we were able to achieve those results for the taxpayers while still maintaining the quality of service. I asked the same from our Uniform Services. Now, of course, we all appreciate everything that they've done for the city and continue to do, and, but I did ask them to try to help us this, this year, given that we had raised their budgets over the cost of living for numerous years in a row. They said, when I met with them, and I think they told you the same thing, that they could not do that without significant reductions in service. So as, in proposing my budget to you, the Board of Aldermen, I proposed a compromise. And instead of the zero that I had, you know, achieved in some of the other departments, we, I proposed 1.7, the cost of living, a cost of living increase. And I asked the departments to see, you know, to live with that for one year. Still, they came to the Board of Aldermen and persuaded you that they needed pretty much, you know, all of, all of the money that they had originally asked for. Therefore, I now reduced the budget and have now attempted to compromise one more time by reducing the budget to halfway between the cost of living increase for each of those two departments and the figure that you passed back on at the last meeting of the Board of Aldermen. So I'm now proposing another compromise. I know it's a difficult decision. I know the departments feel that this is too much to do, but I believe that a $100,000 reduction on a $35 million police budget and a $200,000 reduction on a, you know, 20-some million dollar fire budget is not a, is, is a, is a, is a compromise that could be worked and, and done through the management of the budget in each of those departments. But you all, of course, have to make your own judgments. In, in any event, I'm, I, I think we could be headed for a 4% tax increase, so I'm trying to, given what the state did to us at the beginning of the year, I'm, at least, you know, and I, my, my objective is to just try to save as much as we can to keep the tax rate, the increase in the tax rate as low as, as low as possible. And again, obviously, you're going to have to make your own judgments on that. But Madam President, there was one other item that I wanted to mention, which is certainly of a different sort, which is the, I wanted to announce that longtime City Treasurer-Tax Collector David Fredette has submitted his retirement letter. He's been with the city, as you know, a long time. He's served the city very well, but he has, you know, been going to Florida and spending time with his family, and, you know, he feels that he really wants to retire. Now, that he's not leaving till the end of October, so we certainly have a lot of time to, you know, see him and talk with him between now and then, and I think, I mean, we definitely will hold a retirement party for David, which of course, you all will be invited to. Now, I first knew David back in the 1980s, when I was first mayor, and we, at that point, had an Affordable Housing Task Force. And I nominated him to, he was then, you know, resident of Ward 6, and I nominated him to be on the Affordable Housing Task Force. David was later elected to be on the Board of Aldermen from Ward 6. He then subsequently was elected as an Alderman-at-Large and served as Alder, as the president of the Board of Aldermen for two years. Then he was asked to become the Business Administrator for the Board of, for the Department of Public Works, where he worked for about a year, before Mayor Streeter nominated him to the vacant position, then vacant position of Treasurer-Tax Collector. Now, during that time, of course, he served, as we all know, he served the city very, very well, but in addition to those responsibilities, he served, believe it or not, in addition to Treasurer-Tax Collector, as the interim Board of Public Works Director for nine months, while the city was searching for a new Public Works Director. And again, at another time, he served as the interim CFO for three months. So he's given his all to the city. I know he's a friend of all of us. He will definitely, we will miss him around City Hall. We will miss his expertise and his, all of, all that he's learned about the city over the years, but he, he still will be around Nashua. So I know that, you know, we're all, I know you all will be very sad about his departure, as I am, and I just want to thank David, who may be listening, for all of the years you gave to the city on the Board of Aldermen, the Affordable Task Force, and particularly in your employment for the city, where you have served the city so, so well. So Madam President, I was sorry to hear that, of course, but I wanted to pass it on to you as soon as David gave me the green light to go forward and, and tell you about his plan to depart at the end of October.
Set. That is disappointing, Mayor. David Fredette has been an excellent, excellent person for this city, and, and he will be dearly missed. Remarks? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm very sorry to hear that David's going to retire, although he certainly deserves it, but he has probably, single-handedly saved the city more money than we could ever count. I, I've known David for many, many, many years, back when we worked together at Sanders Associates, and then be, and then on the Board of Aldermen, the Lions Club. I've worked very closely with David on, on a, a number of bonding issues over the years and have learned a lot from David on the bonding process, probably more than I ever wanted to know. And he is going to be extremely hard to replace, and it'll be a very difficult position to fill, so I hope that we are very diligent in finding that replacement.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I too am sad to see Treasurer Fredette retiring, but he is dedicated, as the mayor said, a lot of his time. I have sat on the Board of Directors for the Senior Center for the last four years with David. He's really helped move the center along, made adjustments, made changes, helped us raise money, worked with the financial part of that. David has donated a lot of times, a lot of times I'd be calling to try to get information, and David would be here in the office on Saturday and Sundays. So when he puts his mind to it, he gives his 110%. So Mayor, you do have some big shoes to fill, and hopefully, David will be able to help you. But on a sad note too, David Fredette also had a loss in the last week or so. His brother passed away, so I'd like to send out condolences to him and the rest of his family in the passing of his older brother, Michael. Thank you.
What else? Okay. Recognition period.
Honoring Hazy Ice Cream.
I would recognize Mayor Donches to present the recognition to Hazy Ice Cream.
All right, I think we have people from Hazy here, right? Why don't you come on up?
I believe the Fire Department also has something, if you wanted to come up and...
Come on, just come right here. So, I'll go over there. All right, well, the Fire Department is here because you've been so helpful to, to our Fire Department, but our recognition here says, whereas Hazy Ice Cream showed incredible kindness and generosity in donating ice cream and popsicles to the Nashua firefighters on June 9th, 2021, as they battled a three-alarm fire at 53 Concord Street. Whereas Hazy Ice Cream is a popular, well-liked, local, mobile catering truck owned by Jason and managed by Sheri. Jason and Sheri enjoyed offering their treats to, enjoy offering their treats to Nashua residents at local events like summer fund programs, nighttime kayak parades on the Nashua River, and they are available for graduations, weddings, and other parties. Whereas our Nashua firefighters are dedicated to saving lives and keeping our community safe. While working the scene of the fire at 53 Concord Street, the Nashua Fire Rescue Team was grateful to have cool treats to refresh their energy and continue their work. No one was injured in the fire, and all occupants of the building were safely evacuated. And whereas it is the actions such as those by Hazy Ice Cream that exemplify our city's spirit of community, Nashuans are good, kind, caring, and always there for each other, and they give back to, and to, and help whenever and wherever possible. And now therefore, I, Jim Donches, Mayor of the City of Nashua, and the Board of Aldermen, do hereby recognize Hazy Ice Cream as an exceptional local business in Nashua. Thank you for your kind gesture. So I will give this to Jason. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Chief Rude.
Thank you, thank you very much for being here. Just so everybody understands the great deed that this, these people did tonight, I initially asked some of our people, when I saw the truck was kind of stuck at the scene, and knowing the conditions we were under, could you please go ask them if, if they have ice pops available, and, and I will purchase them for us. We need that. And the answer I got back was, Chief, they said, don't worry about it. They got it. And not only did they take care of our firefighters, I believe you took care of some of the neighborhood children and some of the neighborhood residents who were there as well. So our little token is not as wordy as the city's, but this commendation is awarded to Hazy Ice Cream for the generous donation of ice cream and popsicles for our members during a third alarm fire at 53 Concord Street on June 9th, 2021. We can't thank you enough for your gracious donation. I also have Chairman of the Board Kevin Burgess and Assistant Chief Steve Buxton, who also have another little token for you. Thank you.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Aldermen meetings of June 21st, June 22nd, June 23rd, July 1st, and July 6th, 2021 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Lori Wilshire, President, Board of Aldermen, calling a special Board of Aldermen meeting on August 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public, from Mayor Jim Donches, regarding veto message, regarding line item veto of provisions of Resolution R. 21142, which increase city property taxes.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file.
That additional communication regarding the issuance of unlicensed dogs for the warrant appears under the communication items requiring final approval and was withdrawn from the procedural communications.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and refer to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two speakers signed up. Mr. Westgate, give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Oops. And members of the board, good evening. I'm sorry, I'm still ringing a little bit. Might be the volume. I'll step back even further. I'll continue to try, Madam President, thank you. Again, my name's Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett in Nashua, 111 Concord Street. We represent Edstone Properties, Inc., and I'm here to speak briefly on Edstone's petition for street discontinuance. Maybe I will speak without the microphone, if that's, if that's permitted, Madam.
Well, it gets recorded, so.
Right.
Speak loudly enough, maybe. Sorry about that.
Way back, maybe. Yeah, maybe we'll try, let's see if that, that, thank you very much. With me is David Petropolis of Edstone, and Jaren Slattery, President of Edstone, may be on Zoom as well. So again, I'm just here to speak briefly about our petition for street discontinuance and also the related Resolution R. 21147, and these all pertain to discontinuing small portions of what I've called Old, Old Groton Road. Edstone's developing a residential community known as Terrell Farm Condominium. It's 25 single-family homes with open space. During the plan preparation process, Edstone's engineers, Hainer Swanson, researched in great detail the layout of Groton Road when they prepared the plans for the project. These plans ultimately for the project were approved by the Planning Board. As we detailed in our petition, Madam President, Groton Road, as we know it today, was laid out by a realignment by the state in 1937. As a result of that realignment, and as shown on the plan that Hainer Swanson prepared, which we submitted with our petition, there's a strip of land, sort of narrow, a little triangular shape, long and thin, along a portion of this property's frontage on Groton Road. After the realignment in '37, these portions of the old layout of Groton Road were no longer used. There's also an old, old apparent layout of a section of Old Groton Road that Hainer Swanson simply couldn't locate with any definitiveness. Those two areas constitute the sections that we're seeking for dis, to be discontinued. It's clear that these sections of road, whether laid out or not, are no longer in use. The petition we submitted had unanimous recommended approval from the Planning Board. The Infrastructure Committee of this board also recommended approval of the petition. I believe the city engineer has indicated his recommendation of approval as well. So we would simply respectfully request the Board of Aldermen grant and approve the condition, the petition this evening, and also adopt Resolution R. 21147 to authorize the conveyance of these discontinued portions of Old Groton Road to Edstone Properties. Connection with all this process and following up on the Planning Board approval, Edstone will be granting the city a sidewalk easement for two portions of sidewalk that Edstone will be constructing along Groton Road. Part of the sidewalks in the Groton Road, and part is on the Terrell Farm property. So sidewalks, sidewalk easement will be granted as recommended by Deputy Corporation Counsel Cynthia Leonard. Just in closing, Madam President, we'd like to thank Alderman Jettie, our initial sponsor and the cosponsors for R. 21147. Thank the full board for taking the time to consider the petition. Thank the Infrastructure Committee and Planning Board for their favorable recommendations, the time they spent on our request, as well as the city engineer for his work. Heartfelt thanks to our city clerk, Mrs. Levering, who helped me in the initial processing of the petition, as well as Attorney Bolton's office and Attorney Leonard for the guidance they provided. If the board finds it appropriate, I'm happy to answer any questions. We thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Rhodes.
Good evening, thank you. I, I just want to kind of bring some numbers to you for tonight's vote. I, I do, I do appreciate the work the mayor has, has done in trying to keep the taxes down. I'm a taxpayer as well. I know that the vote before you tonight is somewhat difficult. I understand that. But I just want to, you know, some brief numbers for you. Even with the mayor's adjustments that he made, we are still $132,000 short of meeting the contractual obligation that this board passed in the most recent firefighter's contract. The operating increases that we have requested total $77,000 additional. Two, two, three of the items out of the four that we've asked to increase, one is the HVAC line that we maintain seven buildings that it breaks, stuff breaks. We try to maintain it. Our budget has not been raised in years to maintain that. Our protective clothing line, we're falling behind in that schedule, just because the price of protective clothing has raised, and that provides for the safety and health, health of our firefighters. The technology line that we increased by $10,000 is a new line for us. That line is to account for, when we started to receive this CARES money for the reconstitution of the city, we approached the city and said, we, we need a better way than training 20, 25 people in a room with, with this pandemic, but it's also not efficient for our operation when we have to take two or three fire trucks out of service, you know, for temporary basis to train. This new software program is proven, it's been out for well over 20 years, and the city approved us to buy the, I guess you would call it the hardware, the tablets to use, so each member can log in individually. And what this does is, this will give us accountability for each member, that they can log in, they can know what they need to keep up their certifications and training. We will be able to see what they're lacking on. We will be able to see when we put out important directives, general orders, standard operating procedures and guidelines, we'll be able to say that, no, you did see this. So it's going to bring much-needed accountability to our organization. But that money wasn't included in the CARES money we got. So we got the, we got the tablets, we got the Wi-Fi, but we didn't get the money for the, to buy the software. So this doesn't even, does, doesn't even cover the software. So we're not asking for the full load of 17,000, we're asking for $10,000 of it to help us through this. The Fire Marshal for the six-month period equals the $41,054.50 for, for the salary for six months. To bring this into some context for you, I did some research, and I went back and found the meeting notes of this very same meeting on August 1st of 2005. This was a budget meeting. There are some people in the, in the chamber who were members of that board at that time, and I will quote from the esteemed Alderman Richard LaRose, God rest his soul. "I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I must. We all have different ideas of what the budget should be, and there are some of us who want to see this. Well, I have to say, all of us would certainly like to see this budget a lot less than it is, but that may not be practical." Some of the people who want to see this budget at no higher than 2% to 3%, yet are not coming forward with any solutions or reductions in the budget. They're just saying, we want to come in at 2% or 3%. The other thing, if we're to cut it that drastically, what does that really do to the services, and what does that do to the City of Nashua for the future? Because if you cut the budget... Because if you cut the budget so deep that you take away a lot of services, it will take us a long time to get back to where we need to be, and it will be more costly than an increase in taxes this year over the long run. Yes, I would love to be able to say to the citizens of Nashua, we are able to keep this budget at no extra cost to taxpayers, but that is not going to happen. All you have to do is look around, look at other cities and towns, their budgets are going up, their increases are going up just like ours. We provide services. We are not a service industry. We are not a restaurant or a hotel. We are here, we are not here to make a profit. If we were here to make a profit, we certainly could operate in that fashion, but government doesn't work in that fashion. Government provides services that are geared for a, that are geared for a profit. No, government provides services that aren't geared for a profit, excuse me. They are geared to provide the services that citizens need and at a cost that is as close as we can get for them to afford the services. Yes, there are some people that this is difficult for them. There is no doubt about it, but I think that is always going to be the way. Thank you. And this was 16 years ago, and this is, this was, this was the budget meeting that resulted in the cut, the job that we are respectfully asking you to restore 16 years later. Thank you.
Communications requiring Final Approval.
Communication has been received from Susan K. Levering, City Clerk, regarding issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs.
Laura Cohoon.
Just a moment, I didn't realize there was someone waiting to speak. One moment, please, Laura.
Thank you.
So Alderman Karen?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs effective August 10, 2021, by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs effective August 10, 2021, by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. We're going to go back to the public comment. Ms. Cohoon?
Yes. It's Laura Cohoon at 30 Greenwood Drive. I first want to say, I do not blame the state, but the mayor and the Board of Alderman on the spending habits of Nashua. In doing my research back to 2016, the police have gone from $28 million to $35 million. That's a 21% increase in their funding. The fire has gone from $22 million to $28 million. That's another 21% increase. The fire and the police departments should learn to live within a budget like all other taxpayers in Nashua. I therefore do not want any additional funds going to either the police or the fire because it will only bring the 21% up even higher. And if you realize it, that's a 3.5% in the last six years that both the police and the fire have gotten. Maybe the fire department should buy cheaper treadmills so that they don't have to spend all the money on everything and spend all the taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Okay. Communications requiring Final Approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for copier leases and maintenance.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file, and approve a multi-year contract for copier leases and maintenance for the following offices. DPW Engineering, Alderman's Office, Community Development to Machines, and Risk Management to Xerox Financial Services. Maintenance from Conway Technology Group in an amount not to exceed $34,000, $35,576.40. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology, Fund 54421, copier maintenance by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award for body cameras.
Alderman Laws?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award a six-year contract for body cameras for 179 officers and 31 vehicles to include hardware, software licenses, data storage and retrieval, warranty, support, installation, and training for 72 months with utility of Decatur, Georgia, in an amount not to exceed $1,825,000, or $304, excuse me. Funding will be through Department 150 Police Department, Fund 81100 Capital Improvements, and is contingent upon the approval from Capital Improvements Committee in the Board of Alderman by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on the motion?
Alderman Mulcher?
Alderman Kelly?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to the police departments for coming and doing a very thorough conversation, presentation around the body cameras. There's, it's really high-tech, the ones that they're going for, and there was just a ton of really great information on how these are going to work and the maintenance. So I'm grateful that we are doing this, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou?
Would Alderman Laws just repeat the price for me?
I can repeat the price. It's $1,825,304 for 72 months.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing no one, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions?
Petition for street discontinuance, Old Groton Road.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to grant the petition for street discontinuance of Old Groton Road by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
It wasn't me.
Alderman Tenza? Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Do I dare say yes?
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Petition for street layout, 44 Buck Meadow Road.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to grant the petition for street layout, 44 Buck Meadow Road by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and 0 nays.
That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed to the Airport Authority, Joe Duquette of 38 Hills Ferry Road, Nashua, for a term to expire August 31, 2026; to the Arts Commission, Tina Cassidy of 36 Arlington Street, Nashua, for a term to expire September 1, 2024; Carol Robey, 9 Mendelson Drive, Hollis, New Hampshire, for a term to expire August 31, 2024; to the Board of Registraz, Gwen McAliff of 118 Apple Tree Green, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31, 2021; to the Business and Industrial Development Authority, Bradley Veer of 547 Emher Street, Nashua, for a term to expire September 30, 2023; Jason B. Haviland in 29 Todd Road, Nashua; and Deborah Novati of 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, for terms to expire September 30, 2024; to the Capital Improvement Committee, Charles Budris of 2 Shelley Drive, Nashua; and Scott LeClaire of 10 Daylily Drive, Nashua, for terms to expire August 1, 2023; and Lawrence Zetella of 31 McDonald Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire August 1, 2022; to the Citizens Advisory Committee, Beth Quamtocham of 14 Ellis Drive, Nashua; and Elizabeth Howard of 12 Old Field Road, Nashua, for terms to expire October 1, 2024; to the Conservation Commission, Jedediah Crook of 52 King Street, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31, 2021; to the Cultural Connections, Amanda Martinez of 45 Concord Street, Nashua, for a term to expire May 1, 2024; to the Downtown Improvement Committee, Michael Buckley of 207 Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire January 31, 2024; Edward Hayes of 137 Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31, 2022; and Danielle Skelly of 175 Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire June 1, 2024; to the Hunt Memorial Board of Trustees, Tammy Crisp of 7 Bartlett Avenue, for a term to expire December 31, 2025; to the Planning Board, Adam Varley, 3 Scotia Way, Nashua, for a term to expire March 31, 2024; and to the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board, Michael Sorato of 4 Water Street, Nashua; Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, City of Nashua, 229 Main Street, Nashua; Eric Druant, 52 Main Street, Unit 206, Nashua; David Fridette, City Treasurer, 229 Main Street, Nashua; Chris Lewis of 670 North Commercial Street, Manchester; Sarah Michon, Community Development Director for the City of Nashua, 229 Main Street, Nashua; Tia Phillips of 2 Clock Tower Place, Nashua; and Angelina Spilius of 15 Technology Way, Nashua, all for terms to expire September 30, 2022; to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Mary Ellen McKay of 9 Webster Street, for a term to expire September 11, 2024; and Esia Boras of 44 Balcom, Balcom Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1, 2024, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the soon-to-be-vary-busy Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees? There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 17, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 23, 2021 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection. I will declare the report of the June 28, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the July 6, 2021 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Planning Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Mark Meehan, 65 Walden Pond Drive, Nashua, to the Nashua Planning Board with a term to expire May 31, 2024. I don't see Mr. Meehan here this evening. He will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions?
Resolution R. 21142 is the next item on the agenda relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise and Special Revenue Fund vetoed by the mayor.
Alderman Dowd?
Like to make a motion to reconsider R. 21142.
The motion is to reconsider. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
No.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
May I call for Alderman Laws one more time? I did not record his vote.
Yes.
Thank you. You have 14 yeses and 1 nay.
And that motion carries. Alderman Dowd?
Like to make a motion to override the mayor's veto of R. 21142 as amended by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd?
I understand the complexities surrounding this year's city budget and the issues that the state has caused relative to a large reduction in state revenues to Nashua. I also understand the mayor's trying to keep the tax rate as low as possible, but I cannot support this veto for the following reasons. First, it does not change any of the reasons we voted to increase the budgets of the police and the fire departments when we passed the FY 2022 budget. I'd like to reiterate the reasons we unanimously approved the budget before us. First, the police formulated a budget for the mayor that did not increase or decrease anything they provided in FY 2021, but he cut their budget to meet an arbitrary number. His veto cut again this evening will force them to provide less service to Nashua than last year since their budget will not support what they were able to do last year. Couple that with the recent increase in the sale and distribution of fentanyl recently in Nashua, and we need the pop units to continue their efforts to thwart this new and expanded threat. The police have always said that they will provide the services we fund them to do, but police like the Nashua Fire Department are driven by personnel costs. All they want to do is keep the same force level they had last year. Having said that, they, along with the fire department, have made Nashua one of the safest cities in the United States to live and contributed highly to us being selected as the fourth best-run city in the United States in FY 2021. Are we willing to sacrifice that for the amount of money we are discussing tonight? Switching to the fire department, this compromise the mayor has presented still does not resolve the loss of fire company in taking one engine or ladder offline. This not only puts resident of Nashua in harm's way, but it's physically irresponsible. Imagine having an $800,000 or $1.000 million piece of equipment sitting in an idle in a station when needed to save lives in Nashua. Imagine you or someone you love trapped in a vehicle crash, and you must wait longer for the men with a vehicle to rescue you and probably save your life. Imagine you or someone you love having a medical emergency and not having the fireman there to provide immediate urgent care until the ambulance arrives. there to provide immediate urgent care until the ambulance arrives. Never mind your house or business burning to the ground due to slower response times due to the possible actions we could take this evening. The one add to the fire department budget is the half-year of a vacant position in the fire marshal's office caused by a former mayor's cut, as was explained earlier. This missing body is the person who should be doing the twice-a-year inspection of our city schools mandated by the state for safety reasons. By the way, we have eighteen schools in Nashua, that's thirty-six inspections. This person will also be responsible for ensuring proper levels of occupancy in restaurants, theaters, auditoriums, as well as training for the fire department. If we override the mayor's veto tonight, it will only add point one-six to the tax rate, which boils down to less than one dollar a month to a homeowner with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home. I had John Griffin run these numbers today. I, for one, will not put the citizens of Nashua's lives and properties at risk for less than the cost of a cup of coffee per month. In addition, I will also not put citizens of Nashua's lives and property in harm's way because we were forced to try and reduce property taxes due to the actions of the governor and the state legislator, excluding all Nashua reps who voted the right way for the budget. We all know the millions of dollars we lost, as was explained by the mayor from the state in FY twenty-two budget. We should not be forced to reduce the safety to our citizens based on those actions. In closing, I implore my fellow Aldermen to do what is right for the citizens of Nashua and keep Nashua one of the safest cities to live in. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
Um, I want to echo some of what, uh, my colleague said. Um, I don't consider the, the number to be arbitrary. I appreciate Alderman, I mean, uh, Mayor Donches trying to keep the tax rate down and trying to apply a fair number to programs across the city. Uh, but I think, as we said in the previous meeting, it's not necessarily, equity doesn't equal equal equality. So, uh, the fire department and the police department may have greater needs, there are much more essential services, we can't afford to cut back on them. None of that has changed from our last meeting. Um, we, I mean, we don't have enough ice cream trucks to call the alarm whenever a fire, you know, kicks in. So, we need our fire department to be well-equipped, capable of responding. We need our firefighters to be well-trained and, uh, up to date on their, on all of the procedures that they need, and we need to make sure that their equipment is not out of date as well. Um, with regards to the position the mayor's in, I, I definitely empathize because I feel like he's getting both sides of the stick here, where his opponents will say that he needs to, um, cut back on the fire and the police, but they're also lobbying pretty heavily not to do anything about the police commissions who, who make decisions about how to spend money, uh, and what their policies are. Um, it seems like he's in a, a position where people will blame him for decisions for budgetary reasons, um, that are out of control, out of control. The, I think it's pretty well-understood, um, that the state has increased our costs and the portion of our budget that is dedicated to their, uh, decrees, and that money came from somewhere. So, as Alderman Dowd said, the impact to the taxpayer being about approximately a dollar per, uh, taxpayer, I think the risk of having a, a, an impacted response or a minimal response is much greater than the cost of, of paying a dollar, and I continue to support the budget that we passed.
Alderman Clemmons?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, forgive my voice this evening, I am a bit under the weather, weather, so I'll try to keep this brief. Um, I, uh, agree with, um, everything that Alderman Dowd had said. I agree with some of what Alderman Lopez said. Um, I will be supporting overriding the, uh, the mayor's, uh, veto because I have never voted for a budget, nor will I ever vote for a budget that simultaneously raises taxes and cuts service. I don't think that that's right. I don't think that that's what people pay their property taxes for. Um, I think we should always be at least trying to maintain what we have, and, um, by overriding the, uh, veto, that's what we'll be doing. So, uh, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. So, um, just to, you know, put things into perspective, the, uh, you know, after, uh, you know, I was on the budget committee and I was at every meeting, and I listened to, um, you know, the presentations by, you know, especially the, uh, fire department and the police department, which we're left with, uh, here, and hopefully after tonight, we'll be done with the budget until next year. But, you know, uh, you have to remember that the, uh, you know, the, the police, their budget is thirty-five million dollars, and the fire department is twenty-eight million dollars. And what the mayor had asked them to do was to, uh, in the police department's case, reduce their, their ask by two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, uh, plus dollars. And the fire department, uh, four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand plus dollars, which are, you know, compared to their overall budgets is not, is not all that much money. But, uh, you know, they, they refused and they argued, uh, they made very good arguments as to why the, the money that they requested, uh, you know, should be, should be given to them. And, and I understand, you know, when the police chief or the deputy chief, you know, come and, and make their case, um, and the fire chief and, and, you know, his deputy come and, and the commissioners for both organizations, you know, I understand, they're advocating for their departments. And, um, you know, so they're, they're making arguments that are, you know, uh, to their, you know, credit, uh, you know, they're, they're well-designed to, to, um, you know, to, to hit us where it hurts. And, uh, you know, and Alderman Dowd, uh, you know, made a, another eloquent, uh, argument in favor of, of restoring the money that they requested. And again, you know, he's, he's touching upon things that hurt us, talking about, uh, you know, uh, somebody dying because the, the response time is lower. You know, it's, it's been, um, you know, someone, you know, said to me that, um, you know, the response time in my ward is going to be less, and that am I going to be responsible for someone's house burning down because of this? You know, I, I understand, you know, the, you know, how important, you know, this is to these people, and, and they're making the best argument they can. But, you know, we're talking, now we're talking about, you know, the mayor asking, and this board, you know, increased, uh, the fire department and the, and the police department to back to what they asked for, and, uh, increased the budget from what the mayor was proposing, uh, six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And, and this board voted for that, uh, the last time. Now the mayor's asking us to reduce it by half of that, three, approximately three-hundred-thousand. You know, uh, I, I don't, you know, we're talking, and when we're talking, uh, thirty-five million dollars, twenty-eight million dollars, you know, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, is not that much money. Um, so on, on the one hand, you could argue, well, why is the mayor even bothering with this? But, on the other hand, why, you know, I don't think, you know, with all due respect, uh, reducing the fire department by two-hundred thousand is going to require them to put a fire truck out of service. When they made that argument during the budget hearing, hearings, um, you know, I challenged them, I challenged them, and I challenged the police when the police said they would have to reduce, uh, police officers, um, as a result, and, and it just, the numbers just didn't add up, and they didn't, they really, you know, with all due respect, they didn't have answers for that. Later, the police department said, well, you know, we came up with that number of police officers because we were using the lo- the lowest level of police officer, you know, the lowest pay grade, assuming that that officer is single, you know, has no family, his, he's getting health insurance from his parents. So, you know, so they, you know, they, 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 they came up with the lowest number they could per police officer in order to increase the number of police officers that would be, uh, eliminated as a result of these cuts. You know, Mr. Donovan from the school department, uh, said to us that, I can't remember what his, his number was, but, you know, it was a lot higher than this. And he said, you know, if I can't find that number in my budget, you know, I shouldn't be doing this job. And... So, you know, I, I, I think, you know, my, my feeling is the same about the, uh, about these cuts. These cuts are, are really small compared to their overall budgets, and, um, you know, I, I, I'm going to vote to support the mayor and his effort to try and keep, uh, the, you know, the inevitable tax increase that we're going to be facing as low as possible. And I don't think, you know, reducing the police department by a hundred thousand or the fire department by two-hundred thousand is going to result in the drastic, uh, reduction in services that, that the, you know, the argument is being made tonight, with all due respect. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, just a couple clarification points. I don't think the police or the fire are asking for more money just so they can have, uh, you know, additional things they can add to their, they're, they've asked for that money so they can provide the same services that they're continuing to sup- to apply to the city from last year. The, there's a, you know, I've gone over their budgets in much more detail than were presented. Came out in that fifty-thousand-dollar study we did on the fire department that they're not asking for. Says we should add two more fire stations and another fire company, and, and, and it's, it's, can't be related to the school department. Mr. Donovan said he could, he could manage a hundred thousand dollars because he's got a hundred-and-sixty-six million-dollar budget under the same rationale that you use for the police department, and we should be asking the school department for well over a million bucks. No. They could use more money too that they wanted to ask for that they didn't. But, when you manage a hundred-and-sixty-six million dollars, trust me, you don't get to within a hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year because you can't overspend. It's much more difficult when you have, for instance, a police department that has no idea how many cases they're going to be handling during the year, and we're still going to have to add money to their reserve, overtime reserve account, because if we have a major crime, all bets are out the window. The money we're giving them right now will not cover that. In the fire department, we, we, they base it on an average number of fires. We're adding a number of high-story buildings to the city in the next year or two, probably in the next year, including a new school. And, and we have to ensure that we have the response times and the staffing to make sure that we can put those fires out in a timely manner. When you man a fire company, there's a lot more to it than just saying, okay, well, for three shifts, we won't have a third, fourth guy on the truck. Can't do that for a number of reasons, and we don't need to get into it. But, I implore the board to, um, make sure that we stay a safe city, and, and that's what they're asking for. They want to be able to say that we've got a safe city, and they want to be able to do the job that we're paying them to do, and that's all they're asking for.
Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, through you to Alderman Dowd, how much extra was it for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home?
It was less than a dollar a month.
A dollar a month, twelve, twelve dollars.
Yeah, it was actually ten dollars and something for a year.
Thank you. Alderman Lou?
Thank you. Um, I'm not surprised that, um, that we're at... And this board, um, feels another because it all, uh, these two items, these two departments boil down to the, uh, collective bargaining contracts that we approved as a body. And I believe that the mayor was not, you know, in favor of, I don't, I don't know, but we approved as a body. So, when I looked at the, um, the cost and the budget, um, what I found is that the police payroll change, it went up, and by payroll, I mean, number fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three, it went up two-point-two million. But the entire police increase went up two-point-one-eight million. So what that tells me is that the police, except for the uncontrollable, uh, cost, um, you know, the contractual costs that increased because we approved a, um, a contract, other than if it weren't for that, they would have actually gone down. And when I look at the fire department, I see that the payroll went up one-point-eight-four million, but the entire fire budget only went up one-point-six-six billion, uh, million, rather. So what that tells me is that they actually did cut back, but they can't cut back their contracted payments. So, um, I would, you know, support, um, oh, overriding the veto.
Alderman Lopez?
Uh, if I could add to what Alderman Lou had, uh, just said, um, I don't know if the mayor wants to comment on this, but it's actually my recollection that it, this is literally what the mayor told us would happen both times that he vetoed the contracts and we overrode it. The reasoning that we had in pushing to support the fire and police, um, contracts that were there was to maintain the integrity of the service, to maintain competitive rates, and neither of those contracts went easily. The fire department ones, uh, went back to the bargaining table, and I thought they came back with, uh, a good-faith attempt to try to lower their healthcare costs. But, this is the si- the situation that the mayor had said we would get into, where we start to have unsustainable budgets. But, I would point out that, again, while it's a situation we're feeling right now because of looking at the taxpayers', uh, bottom line, we're also feeling it because this was, there's an additional expense that was imposed on us by the state, which is, if nothing else, accelerated the situation.
Anyone else? Alderman Clea?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I've got to be honest with you, I've, I've truly struggled with this. Um, at one point it was, I was gonna sustain the mayor's veto, that it was, was going to, uh, agree to override it, and so on. I received a number of calls from constituents who told me very specifically, um, sustain the mayor's override. And I looked at it and said, well, it's a compromise. He, he went halfway. I've listened to what everybody here has to say, and especially what, um, Alderman Dowd had to say about, uh, the safety first. I've always supported the fire, I've always supported the, the police, and I know it's only twelve dollars a year or ten dollars and some odd cents for a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Um, I don't live in a very, um, high-cost area, but it's getting harder and harder to find three-hundred-thousand-dollar homes in my area. They're going up because of the, the price of homes going up, which means that twelve dollars is going up. Um, I know, it's only, it's less than a cost of a, of coffee, but I guess I also have to look at it is that we got to make some cuts somewhere, and this is truly one of the hardest ones that I've had to do. I'll know my answer when my name is called, so, thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to make a comment that's something that came up tonight about the
I just want to make a comment. That's something that came up tonight about the police having a thirty-five million dollar budget, fire having a twenty-eight million dollar budget, and schools having a hundred and sixty-six million dollar budget. That's because that's what it costs to run those departments. That's what it costs. I mean, it sounds like a high number and it is, but that's what it costs to run them. So, you know, the fact that they have thirty-five million and twenty-eight million and we're only cutting a small portion, we ask year after year to cut small portions and we ask them to cut back on, on line items that are, they don't need. So I don't think there's any fat in any of these budgets. I just wanted to comment that, yeah, thirty-five million, twenty-eight million's a lot of money, but that's what it costs to protect our city. The motion before us by Alderman Dowd was to override the mayor's veto of Resolution twenty-one one forty-two as amended by roll call. Is there further discussion on that motion?
Seeing none, with clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeas and two nays.
That motion carries and the mayor's veto of Resolution twenty-one one forty-two as amended is declared overridden.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one one forty-seven, authorizing the conveyance of these continued portions of Old Groton Road.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to amend R twenty-one one forty-seven by replacing it with the goldenrod copy with amendments to the deed, which was recommended at the Committee on Infrastructure by roll call. And I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So, uh, I won't repeat what Attorney Westgate said, but basically these amendments are an agreement by the developer with a request by the planning board and negotiated by Attorney Leonard to add easements for sidewalks on the property abutting the, uh, Groton Road.
You've heard the motion by Alderman Jettie. The motion is to amend. Further discussion on the motion to amend?
Seeing none, with clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Jettie.
I now move for final passage of R twenty-one one forty-seven as amended by roll call. And again, I'd like to say something.
Alderman Jettie.
So, um, you know, as Attorney Westgate explained, when Groton Road was originally laid out back in eighteen forty-seven, I think it was, and then again, excuse me, uh, and then in nineteen thirty-eight, I think, uh, the state repositioned it because there was an S curve in the road and they straightened it. And so the, the original road as laid out was no longer needed because of this, of this new straighter road. So those, um, those pieces of the road have no longer been used. And so it's only right that the title revert back to, um, the, uh, the original owner and now its successor in title. And I ask that you support it.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution twenty-one one forty-seven as amended. Further discussion on that motion?
Seeing none, with clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution twenty-one one forty-seven is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one one forty-eight, authorizing the acquisition of a portion of property at forty-four Buck Middle Road, tax map C, Lot twenty-five.
Motion for final passage of R twenty-one one forty-eight by roll call. I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we're in final negotiations and I can thank Attorney Celia Leonard for, for, um, marching this through. I, I, I think we're, we're there. We take the motion tonight, so that we have the approval to buy it and we should be all set, I hope.
The motion is for final passage. Further discussion on that motion?
Seeing none, with clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons. I'm sorry, Alderman Clemmons, I didn't hear you. Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yep.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
And may I call for Alderman Clemmons one more time?
Please.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you very much. You have, thank you. You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution twenty-one one forty-eight is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one one fifty-one, relative to a ballot referendum concerning sports betting within the city of Nashua.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-one dash one fifty-one by roll call. And may I speak briefly to the matter?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I feel this is important to get this on the ballot. As many of you know, and I state this for the folks at home, both Boston Billiards and the River really contribute an awful lot of money to the charities of these, uh, community. It alleviates us, as you know, as we just got through budget season. We looked at the budget book and we still help out charities, but this really dulls the knife, so to speak, and kind of makes it easier for worthwhile charities to get this. Does this sports betting go to the charities? The answer is no, but it's part of the door opener. People that will come into these establishments, hopefully will play a game of chance and, uh, take some of their disposable income, and which entices the charities. So therefore, I think it goes hand in hand and I urge you all to support this matter. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez and then Alderman.
Like foothold or foot in the door here for this particular opportunity and that it doesn't go to other, um, communities and other, other places. So, um, above all of that, this is a referendum. So it gives the Nashua taxpayers, again, the opportunity to, to weigh in on it. And a lot of the feedback that I got from the last, um, election is there was, they were not clear on what was going on with this particular referendum item the first time it went around. So I think there's an opportunity to do a better job of messaging, make sure that taxpayers, uh, are fully informed and at the ballot, they're able to vote. And if they turn it down again, then their voice is clear. But I think we owe it to the, um, the businesses, uh, in Nashua to provide this opportunity economically.
Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to echo, echo the words of both my colleagues here today. There are a limited number of licenses and yes, this was on the ballot before. It was defeated and as, um, Alderman Lopez pointed out, it was defeated because I, I believe many people didn't understand it. I got a lot of phone calls afterward saying, why wasn't this explained to us? Why didn't we understand it? The, the truth is, I actually thought that the, the gaming association and so on would have, uh, explained it a little bit better. I think they realize the error of their mistakes and that they charitable gaming, uh, organizations that we have right now. The, as, as Alderman Lopez and Alderman O'Brien pointed out, the money does not go, there's no portion of it that goes to the, the charities. But just like, um, when they have a blue light special at Kmart, and yes, I'm aging myself, it brings people in and they buy other things. And that's kind of what happens, is they come in, they place a bet on a game or something of that nature, and, um, then they go sit at a table. So it, it kind of brings them in. I wish that, um, on the state level, we hadn't quite organized it the way we did, but that is already the done deal. And, uh, I think we're missing out on an opportunity, as I think Alderman Lopez was trying to say, by at least not giving the, um, the voters a second bite at that apple. So, thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Uh, thank you. I'm against nasty business. But this is not about whether or not, uh, you know, we're, we're legalizing sports gambling or sports betting. You know, the state has already done that. And, you know, this, this has, as has been pointed out, the money doesn't go to our charitable organizations, you know, the, um, charitable gaming facilities do contribute a lot of money to help our, our nonprofits. And I know the nonprofits have become dependent on that money. I think it's unfortunate that that's how the state chooses to, um, to, uh, to support, uh, nonprofits, but that's, that's the way you know, are going to be spending less on the gaming portion of, of the business, which a portion of it does go to the charities. But that's not what this, what this is about. This is just putting it on the ballot and
Seeing no one, with the
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution twenty-one one fifty-one is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O twenty-one sixty-four, authorizing a park, police parking only parking space on Ash Street.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for a final passage of O twenty-one sixty-four by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance twenty-one sixty-four by roll call. Discussion on that motion.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Do you know where the parking space is going to be?
Uh, the, let me answer.
Alderman Lopez.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, so this was requested by the Nashua Powell to go directly in front of Nashua Powell. It would enable the police officers who are interacting with the youth there to park. And it would also serve as a, um, attention grabber to the spot or the part of the street, particularly where people are crossing to get to the Futsal Court, uh, because kids cross in that area a lot. We've repeatedly asked, uh, DPW if it would be possible to put a crosswalk there or some kind of attention, gaining thing, and they are opposed to that because it would, could potentially distract drivers when they're trying to pay attention to students. So it, it serves a double purpose in that particular spot.
Can I follow up?
Alderman Gathright.
So is it in front of the, um, handicap signs? It's not going to affect either one of those signs, correct?
No, I don't think, it's further down.
Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I, as somebody who, um, was at the Futsal, um, court doing, uh, food, the, the food drives and, and different, um, handing out for United Way and so on, I can tell you that, that parking is, um, very difficult on that street to begin with. And I think to have a, um, a spot that is dedicated for police parking is extremely important, especially right there. And I'm, I was glad to hear also that it's not going to interfere with the handicap, um, parking. But I do agree with what, uh, Alderman Lopez said, that, um, there is some significant issues with the, with the kids crossing the street right there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, with clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and ordinance twenty-one sixty-four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance O twenty-one sixty-six, providing for Alderman at Lodge to acting committees to meet requirement that quirms be physically present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'd like to move for indefinite postponement in O twenty-one O sixty-six by roll call.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Discussion on that motion.
Seeing none, with clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and ordinance twenty-one sixty-six is declared indefinitely postponed. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R twenty-one one fifty-four, approving the use of additional U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development home
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. First reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
Alderman Mulcher, you missed, um, Alderman Cleaver and myself.
I'm sorry?
Dushawn, Alderman Kelly.
Oh.
And Alderman Cleaver wanted to be added as well.
Okay, thank you very much. We've added you both, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
First reading of Resolution R21155, relative to the transfer of $75,000 from Department 194 contingency account 70100, general contingency to Department 198 inter-fund transfers account 89725, transfer to city retirement trust fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, seeing no one. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee. Okay, Alderman Kelly, did you want to be a co-sponsor to that as well?
I didn't intentionally my, my hand out, but sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of Ordinance 02167, recognizing Juneteenth as a city holiday and revising the holiday section of the unaffiliated employees' personnel policies.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, Director of Financial Services Division, Human Resources Department, Personnel Advisory Board, with the mayor. Okay, period for general public comment. No one's signed up.
Lori Ordolano.
Miss Ordolano?
Yes. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'd like to just say quickly that I did support the veto by the mayor. And I think that I get a little concerned when I hear a lot of emotional language used to describe the reasons why we have to keep the fire and police budgets where they're at. You know, we elicit an emotional response, response in people when we look at these safety issues and time. But I'm not certain that it's fully justified, or we've seen enough numbers that do justify that. And when we talked about the personnel cuts that would have to be endured in departments based on these budget cuts, the math just didn't really make sense. So, you know, your DPW department also is a very large department. They negotiated a pretty reasonable contract. They didn't come in and ask for additional funding. And the type of work that they do is really, gives pleasure to people and makes the city life more appealing and satisfactory. And because it doesn't elicit this negative emotional response regarding safety and health, we sort of overlooked that. So I think the budget, the vetoed budget should have carried, and I think it was reasonable. Also, I want to speak, at the last meeting last week, Attorney Bolton made some statements regarding a right-to-know request I read into the record. He said that I did not provide, I conveniently left things out. I did not, I also didn't read the full correspondence into the record. That's true, because I'm limited by a three-minute time period. And I sent you all the emails, the right-to-know request response, so you could all read it in its full glory. But I did read the sections that were important to me, that I highlighted, that I felt were not correct on the part of the city. I'm also really concerned when he was able to tell all of you last week that I had received all the available emails from, that Ms. Kleiner had received from IT. And I hope that you read that request and saw that they were not provided to me. I'm getting an update on July 30th, which is not necessarily the response, or that the records would be responded to, it would just be an update. And it really concerns me when he can identify that the right-to-know was given to me that night and then give information that is not correct. Because right after Beth Jar spoke, he said, I never say a thing, a single thing that is not true. And I'm wondering why he responded and spoke to my right-to-know request and gave information out that was not true to the board. I also don't think it's appropriate that when a citizen responds on a time limit, that the administration will come back and fire back at the citizen. And there's no rebuttal time to correct the record. So I'm doing it this week, and I feel he was out of line. He was inappropriate. And I don't think the board should allow him to speak and say such things. We should be able to challenge those. Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment? Okay, seeing no one, remarks by the members of the board, I'll start on this side.
Well, I just want to say that this weekend, we actually laid Reverend Dr. Bertha Perkins to rest. And like to thank the First Church and the Police Department and all those that made it possible. The church was totally full. And thank Mayor Donches, who also spoke on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, this was the most difficult meeting I've ever been in, trying to decide what to do with the budget. Because I know that people back in Ward 1 really don't want to pay more. They really don't. But a dollar a month for what we're going to work towards, I think it was, I think it was worth it. And I think it's because we have been involved, deeply involved in the budget since the beginning of the year. And we see what's done by the state. We made the right decision. And I'm very grateful we were able to support the fire and the police. And I'm disappointed that we weren't able to support the mayor as well, because I think he's working on, on the side of the citizens. And thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, I would like to just say that I too am disappointed that Dave Fredette is retiring. I think, I'm surprised, I didn't think he was old enough to retire. I think we ought to check his birth certificate to make sure what his age is. But I wish him the best. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because we had a resident call in during our public hearing last week, and they couldn't get into the phone. The incorrect passcode was published for the phone callers. And I've noticed that a passcode should be, or seems to always be six digits. And last week, the passcode was printed on our agenda as a seven-digit. And I just wanted to point that out to anyone here in the chamber that might be hosting a meeting in the future. If you find out that someone can't get in, it could be that the passcode has a typo in it. And that's what happened last week. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. So something that's, you know, really not, not all that consequential, but is a pet peeve of mine that comes up every year, is this idea that we are sending police officers out to serve dog warrants to people's homes. I understand it's a, it's a matter of state law, and the clerk has to do it. But, you know, as I, as I look at the memorandum that was sent to us, it's currently about 900 homes that a police officer is going to have to go out to and serve this dog warrant. I seriously doubt that the, that the city or the Police Department is seizing, you know, 900 dogs in the next month or so. But it seems to me that this would be a good amendment for one of the state reps who's here to look at, so that we can amend this process, so that if someone has not paid their dog fees, that, you know, essentially gets tacked on to another bill, like their car registration if they have one, or, or property taxes, to make it a little bit more of an efficient process. You know, I think there are a lot of, a lot of issues with it. I think the $7 cost of service fee probably doesn't cost the, probably doesn't cover the cost of actual service for the Police Department. So, you know, I, I would hope maybe we can, we can look into that, a state can look into that moving forward. Again, it's not really a big issue, but something that comes up every year and bothers me, so I thought I'd bring it up. I also wanted to congratulate the mayor on getting the support of all the public comment tonight. It's a, I think it's a, it's a first for the, for the people calling in, so congratulations.
Alderman Lopez.
First, I, I don't even know what's going on with that. I just wanted to express my condolences to the family, friends, and the community on the passing of Reverend Perkins. She's attended a lot of events over the years, particularly vigils and faith gatherings. She's a very inspirational part of the community, and I just wanted to acknowledge her passing. I wanted to, when we brought up the upcoming resolution to adopt Juneteenth, I just wanted to communicate that last year, we had talked about adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day as a substitute for Columbus Day. And I've been in coordination with Alderman Kelly, with the Cultural Connections Committee, the library, and the mayor, in doing some due diligence on that, and making sure that we're actually coordinating the Indigenous peoples and making sure they are represented in our history and how we would celebrate that day. I wanted to bring the board's attention to the Board of Health meeting tomorrow, 12:30. I had emailed them and let them know that we had tabled the motion to expand the board. I didn't hear any specific concerns about the size of it, the scope of it, or how, or that it would interfere, just that there was a preference on the part of the chair not to. So I wanted to have that discussion at the committee level, because he's expressed that he had not heard of it prior to that and had not gotten any emails. I did double-check, and our legislative assistant did forward that to the Board of Health when it was passed. And I do personally recall bringing it up at past meetings. But I think either way, the board should, the Board of Health should have the opportunity to discuss it, how that's reflected in their minutes, I'm not entirely sure, because they don't take two ver, they don't take verbatims, which is why I'm inviting other Aldermen to attend, because I don't intend to contradict a board with regards to a recommendation for how it's structured. But you won't be able to hear the arguments or see the arguments unless there's an audio record kept or the meetings are done verbatim, which has not been the case for the last several. So again, that would be tomorrow at 12:30. And then finally, I wanted to draw the board's attention to the Your Choice, Your Voice initiative that the Community Development Office is doing. That food stall court that Alderman Cle mentioned, and has really been a huge addition to Ash Street, was created at the behest and with the support of local residents. Some of the children of the Powell Center particularly identified that as a possible use for resources. And that's how participatory budgeting works. You let people living in that immediate area and in that neighborhood identify what kind of amenities, or what kind of resources, or what kind of supports they would like to use $40,000 for. So it's a great educational experience for people in the community. It's a great opportunity for them to feel like they're heard and they're actually involved. Even the name Your Choice, Your Voice kind of communicates that. So I'd encourage Aldermen to attend to that. I am planning a local town hall meeting two weeks from Wednesday on July 28th, at 9:00 a.m. at Palm Square. And I am expecting the Community Development Division to present at that point. So if Aldermen would like to attend for that, you're definitely invited. Thank you.
What day is that, Alderman Lopez?
Wednesday, Ju, July 28th at 9:00 a.m.
Wednesday, thank you. Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. Mayor, I want to thank you in Channel 16 for showing the Fourth of July fireworks on TV live that day. I did get a lot of comments, because people still did not want to go out with such a large crowd. So hopefully next year, you could do it again. I thought it was great, maybe a little bit more advertising ahead of time, but I thought it was fabulous. And the other thing is, I want to thank your staff for taking the time to review all those members whose terms have expired on these boards and commissions, because I had received a phone call that there were some really outdated. And they really worked hard. And Madam President, none of them have to come to the personnel meeting. We'll just read them off, but, thank you. And I think you have about 10 or 15 more to go. So I really appreciate Cheryl and your staff taking the time to do that, really. And Alderman Jettie, Mr. Fredette is old enough to retire, so, trust me.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I hope that all of our FY '22 budget meetings are now over. We'll have a budget meeting later in the month, or I think we have one thing, maybe two now with this meeting on the agenda, one. So it will be very short. And I just want to thank all the members of the Budget Committee for going through all the time and effort to look at the budget. And it's always difficult. And I think in the end, we will cherish the budgets that we approved. So, thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. To Alderman Lopez, I got word that the July Board of Health meeting was canceled, because they're moving. That's what I got from Dr.
There's still an update on my thing, but thank you for letting me know.
From Dr. Wolf Rosenbloom this morning, because I've been trying to meet with her. So I think it's been canceled. Her, she said the meeting for July is canceled due to the Public Health Department's move. So I don't know if that was advertised or not. I actually put out there, it was there, the meeting was there too, so we may need to check on that.
So it had been originally proposed to, but I still got the meeting invite. So I don't know the meeting invite's for now, maybe nothing.
Maybe she's mistaken.
Oh, she's 30% of the board, so I don't think she is. Ties back to that quorum issue.
The, I'd like to thank my colleagues, and especially the Budget Committee, for all of their hard work. We didn't always agree on everything, but I don't think we've made any mistakes. I think everybody worked very hard, and the way it came out is the way it came out. I think everybody, and I think the citizens should know that every single person went to that, every meeting with 100%, and for those that couldn't, such as myself, due to illness or other things, watched those meetings, asked those questions. It's never hard, never, I'm sorry, an easy decision to make in any way, shape, or form. But I'd like to thank all my colleagues for all their hard work on that. And I also wanted to comment about the passcode error. I did get a couple of phone calls on that as well. And I just want to remind the citizens that if they can't get in, there is a telephone number that's usually part of there for them to, to call. And I think that that person might be able to help them. For one of my constituents, that did work. So just for future reference, we are human, we all make mistakes. I just recently gave out my phone number and only gave out six digits, so. And I missed one of the ones in the middle, and someone said to me, is this a contest? And I went, yes, and if you get it right, you get to talk to me. So, yeah, those things kind of happen. I'd also like to acknowledge once again, hazy ice cream, that fire was in my ward. And I got so many phone calls from people telling me how wonderful they were. And, and I believe that they are constituents of Alderman Lopez, but
They're really cool.
Yeah, they are, they were so kind, and there were scared children there, and giving them some ice cream and trying to help them. It doesn't take away the fear, but it kind of lessens the anxiety a little bit. And they went above and beyond. And I'm very grateful that they were given the commendations from the firefighter and from the mayor. And as far as Mr. Fredette is concerned, I agree with you, Alderman Jettie, he does not look old enough. But I have to go with my esteemed colleague, based on all the things that the mayor had said that he had done, no one could accomplish that in the amount of years that he looks versus the amount of years that he's, he's had. So I want to know who his doctor is, in that response. And as far as like the dog warrants are concerned, I agree again with Alderman Tenza. I get a lot of phone calls from people saying, well, why are we charging this and why are we charging that? It does come down from the state. It is not the city clerk trying to be mean and nasty and rile up all the dogs. It is a small fee, but people do forget. I know during COVID, I got a few phone calls, people saying, oh my God, it's June and July, and I forgot to do my, and it was, try to do it online if you can. You can't if, if your rabies vaccination is up. But I know Ms. Lovering and that the City Clerk's office has bent over backwards to try to help people get in there. And they are not the bad guys in all of this. It is the state. I appreciate some of the suggestions that Alderman Tenza had, had brought up. I'm not sure those necessarily would work, putting it on property taxes or cars, because some people may not have those. But I agree, there's got to be some work around. But I agree, there's got to be some workaround for it. And I, and I think we should, we should look into it. And I'm also grateful that we have agreed to put the charitable gaming back on the ballot and let the voters decide. If they say no, so be it. If they say yes, then more for it. So thank you so much for the time.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to recognize Dave Fredette. Worked on him with several committees. He's been here a long time and referred to him with this knowledge he will be missed. But congratulations, Dave, on your announcement. And I also would like to thank the mayor and to Fire Chief Rhodes for recognizing Hazy Ice Cream. Some, every once in a while, people that know that I was a firefighter will probably ask, "What do I prefer, fight a fire during a blizzard or, or a 90-degree day?" I'll take the blizzard. You can always get warm. But when it's a hot day, like it was that day, my son was working, had my grandson with me, and we went up to watch the fire. And I'll tell you, being there myself, my heart went out to the brothers. They did a very good job under extreme weather conditions. And where some people were taking their siesta or resting or finding a shade tree, these are, these guys are going from heat into heat. And they come back out and there's no break. And so therefore, to have a tasty treat from the Hazy Ice Cream Company, water supply from the department was very much needed. And again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the chief for recognizing them. And it's nice to see the community involvement of people caring like that. So very good, tally ho. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Two bites at the apple tonight?
I want to correct my mistake.
Alderman Lopez.
So I checked the board, the public calendar, and the Board of Health meeting is not on it. So it's probably some kind of computer glitch or something. So I don't think there's a meeting tomorrow.
Hey, I would like to send my condolences to the community who was touched by Reverend Perkins. She was quite a dynamite person. And she, she had been around for a long time, has done a lot of good things in the community. So my condolences to her family, friends, and her community. Also, regarding Dave Fredette, I've known Dave Fredette for, oh, 25, 30 years or so. Top-notch guy. I mean, he, he is, I think, one of the best employees this city has. I think he's very competent. He will be missed. I mean, he's done a lot of good work for this city. Great guy, but I wish him well in his retirement. Also, my condolences to him for the loss of his brother. I guess that's all I have. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Thursday, the Joint Special School Building Committee, 7:00 p.m. in the Nashua High North Boardroom. And it's all in-person, there is no Zoom there. And if you, if you think we should add it to there, it's all up to the Board of Education, because they own the building.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, unfortunately, or fortunately, nothing is up on the infrastructure. So members of the committee, enjoy your time off, it's the first one. And I think the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee will be taken up the slack, so.
Any other committee announcements? Seeing none, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, President, excuse me, I would like to make a motion that the July 13th, 2021 meeting in the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and 0 nays.
That motion carries and we are adjourned at 9:24 p.m. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.